All right, start the meeting now.
We declare the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, so we have, um, third-party requests here. It's Knights is the first agenda item, and that as a reminder is under the municipal tab. Turning there and out. So the returning, returning request seniors plus for two thousand, Oxford Historical is requesting three thousand. Last year they got two thousand. And then you have Cancer Resource Center Western Maine requesting a thousand as they did last year. And then the new ones are Life Flight for ten fifty-seven, Camp Susan Curis for five thousand, Spurwink five hundred, Safe Voices a thousand, Sweetser a thousand, Rock House Youth Center did not give an amount, and the new requests total seventy-five fifty-seven. The budget committee, when they reviewed these, they supported seniors plus for two thousand, Oxford Historical Society for two thousand, matching last year, Cancer Resource Center remained for a thousand. And they did not move forward with any of the new requests. Anybody here for a third party, any of those organizations?
Yeah, would you, would you, who'd like to go first?
It sounds like she was named first, so I'm at the floor.
Hi, my name is Diane Wood. I'm a senior's plus. I'm a community resource specialist, as well as a licensed social worker. And I work in our normal way office, um, three days a week. And, um, we are asking for the same amount that we did last year. And probably most notable is our Meals on Wheels program that we have, um, which we serve two thousand nine hundred and five meals. Um, were delivered to twenty-one residents with a value of twenty-nine thousand and fifty dollars. Um, we have volunteers that deliver those meals, um, two, two folks every week. Um, and there are lots of other things also, um, that we provide to our seniors. Um, our office is open for walk-in appointments, or they can call and schedule an appointment with one of us. Um, and we do have, um, information and assistance. We get lots of calls every day requesting anything from A to Z. Um, it could be to replace apprentice school assistants, um, being homeless, um, and really running the whole unit. Um, and we have lots of resources to offer folks, um, when they call. And if we don't have a resource, we'll do some digging and research on the computer and get back to them. So we offer Medicare counseling, family caregiver support program. Um, I just got out of an Alzheimer's, um, support group that I run for caregivers, um, of Alzheimer's patients. We also do community education. Um, we run programs at senior plus that, um, many residents are welcome to come to. Could be a craft class, could be a travel class, um, it could be just a game day to get out and socialize for folks that are, um, don't have a lot of opportunity to do that. Uh, we have a money minders program, so we have volunteers that go to people's homes and assist them with, um, paying their bills or balancing their checkbook, things like that. We have a friendly caller program where we, uh, match folks to make a call to seniors once a week just to do a check-in. A lot of our seniors live alone, and that's a real important call, just to check in with them, see how they're doing, um, and make recommendations if their family mail in, or they need to call your doctor, um, things like that. Um, we do a veterans independence program, um, trying to keep our veterans at home longer and independently. And, um, someone needs with them in their home to assess resources, have communication with the VA if we need to. And we also do short-term case management. Um, senior plus would like to thank the town of Oxford for all that they do, uh, for us, you know, the monies that, um, are designated to us really help. Any questions, like an answer or?
Do you want to take this up right now?
Do you want to do all of the third parties, or do you want to?
Well, maybe everybody be fresh on this one in particular.
A few?
Anybody, any comments or? All those in favor?
Right.
Okay, now.
Are we going to lump someone, or are we going to do each individual?
I think that's up to the board. If you want to lump someone, then.
What's everybody feel on that?
It looks like they've passed everyone on this.
Want to hear from everybody? I can just go down the list.
Okay, who's going to go first?
All right.
Next.
I'm Dr. Schiller, the president of the Oxford Historical Society for those here who don't know who I am. We actively are a very small nonprofit, um, solely volunteers that support the town, uh, in a sense that we provide all the historical data that we have. Um, in fact, we recently, uh, thanks to Ed Knightley, um, discovered some very historical documents, data back to eighteen thirty in the basement of the library. Um, we recently purchased a fire safe to keep all of those records. So we have town records all the way back to eighteen thirty. And literally, I was explaining to the secretary of the year that the safe is completely full. We're going to need another one because there's so many documents in it now. Um, we also manage the Historical Society K House, uh, which is a museum that represents the town. Uh, we have a lot of, um, farming equipment and things inside the building that, that are historic to Oxford, um, that were donated by local Oxford residents. It was, as you know, a town-owned property. Um, the Historical Society in the past has never been one to come to the town and ask for support. Um, but, but now that we own the building, uh, we kind of feel we represent it like a historical library. Um, we're asking the townspeople to help us and, you know, we, again, very small donations that we receive all year, um, very actively involved in volunteering to fundraise and do all kinds of activities to raise additional money. We function on about, and our books are open, um, to anyone who wants to see them. We, we literally function on about eight thousand dollars a year, and that is with grants and fundraising. Um, it's very small. Um, we have, we are responsible for pay our water, our lights, you know, to maintain the building as well. Running process of replacing the porch at the building, um, we did shore it up this winter. Costs is about eight hundred dollars just to shore off the porch because my concern was if the porch came down, it was going to rip the roof down. And it was, it, we were going to be in some serious trouble. Um, so the society members in the past, um, for whatever reason, did come to the town a lot for support. I'm asking, and I appreciate, um, the budget committee approving it, um, but I'm just here to answer questions and let you know that, yeah, they're always answering questions on calls when people call about the history of the town, um, the beating house, um, people who lived in the town, you know, very much in favor that we need to remember the people who built the town. Um, and that's my, that's my goal, um, as well as the active members. And so for that, thank you.
Do we have anybody else that? Except for, okay.
Nobody from Cancer Research or Western Maine? Life Flight, Camp Susan Curis? Spurwink, Safe Voices, Sweetser, Youth Center?
All right. Now, would you want to get a quick call?
Just so the budget committee, okay, the seniors plus, Historical Society, and the Cancer Research?
They did for a total of five thousand dollars.
Do you want to make that a motion?
Can I make a motion?
In further discussion. All in favor?
I believe the motion is for two thousand for seniors plus, two thousand for Historical Society, and a thousand for Cancer Resource, right?
Five.
Five, yeah. Want to move on to the update?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. So the, just want to give you guys an update to bring you up to speed. I gave you all some handouts, um, reminders. The first thing we're going to end up talking about is fire EMS budgets. I forward to all of you, the, so we have the options, the, the, the same, the same, same fire department option, meaning status quo. Then we have option B, which we discussed, which is the, the full-time option. And then option C that the board requested, which is the hybrid, if you will, the half, half, you know, half full-time, half per diem. So we'll get into that in more detail, but we have still hauling bids. That's still something the selectmen are discussing. So that's a pending item. The union negotiations for police and highway are still pending items, but we all know those things. The transfer station loader, that was voted on by the, uh, budget committee to not, not support it in the lease purchase, but to support it as a capital purchase. So what I've done in your paperwork is I have, I've left it in two places so that it doesn't go by the wayside. That is, so I've left it under debt service, and I have left it under, um, and I put it into capital improvements so that it could be discussed tonight. Um, all in all, the budget committee, they approved, or they approved to go to town meeting, the general government or administration, police, highway. They also, for the fire rescue budget, they approved to go to town meeting option B, which is the one million two hundred and sixty-two thousand three sixty-eight. Uh, public safety buildings, recreation, general assistance, transfer and recycle, sewer, municipal. Um, the only change they made to municipal was what we just discussed with third parties. So that made it so that rather than what is noted, the two forty-five, it actually is two forty-four, uh, to reflect that. Debt service, again, fifty thousand dollars less because of that transfer station loader. So that would make debt service in this case, rather than the eight oh three, it would be the seven fifty-three. So, and then on the capital, on the capital items, what we have pending is the highway department, uh, truck. We've got to discuss that tonight. The budget committee approved that to move forward, to move forward as a capital item. The fire department, uh, vehicle savings, we've settled that. Wastewater treatment facility saving for the next generator for the pump station, the budget committee did not support that. The transfer station recycling loader, we just spoke of that. Cemeteries in Thompson Lake Dam Reserve, they supported that. We have to discuss that tonight. Wastewater treatment plant reserve for repairs has been settled on both, go to town meeting. Transfer station bay heater and recycling demo wall were not approved on the budget committee side, and we need to discuss that tonight. So what I was hoping if the board is okay, that we can start with the fire department piece. And just a disclaimer, so the fire chief had a, a, a training plan well ahead of time, and now that we've got this meeting tonight, she was already planning on being gone, so I assumed it would be okay if she teamsed in to be part of this conversation. So, are you able to hear us, chief?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, so in your books, you've got option A, as I'm calling it, which is the, you know, status quo. Um, option B, we discussed the other night, just terms of a pressure. Status quo. Status quo is a total budget of one million one hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and forty-four. Option B, which is full-time, is one million two hundred and sixty-two thousand three sixty-eight. And option C, which is like a hybrid approach, is one million two hundred and fifty-one thousand one ninety-five. So would the board like to hear from the chief to explain more about option C, or that's fresh?
Yes. Ashley.
Um, sorry, I couldn't be there tonight. Um, uh, sorry. Uh, did you give them the comparison sheet or no?
Yep, I've actually got that right here. I'll pass it down as you're, as you're talking.
Okay. Um, so as he passes that out, I'll just start to, um, kind of hit the high notes of the two differences. So option B is the left call, and option C is the right call. Um, we labeled them as nine full-timers and five full-timers because it's a convenient way. So it would be eight new positions in the B, four new positions in the C. Uh, as you see, we kind of discussed in the last just the first section, described what the full-timers are, um, and what they would work. The next goal that ranks in B and C is the per diem line, obviously with nine full-time staff. That's a whole line going down significantly because you only end up paying per diems for six days to fifteen during the day shifts. The rest of the shifts would be covered by, um, the full-timers. Where if you look at the C on that second full of points, um, you see that significantly higher because you're still having, um, seven equal, you know, shifts that need to be covered for the day, um, besides the full-timer. So we're kind of at the teary point here. This is the seesaw, um, between the eight and the, um, adding no full-timers and just keeping myself. This is kind of like that middle point. I, you'll see at the bottom that it truly isn't that much difference, um, just because it's a happy medium. You'll see that meetings and training will up with, um, the five full-time because there'll still be, um, a lot more per diems that we need to make sure we're still training. Um, and that will require more monthly things and trainings. Um, the next line, you'll see the difference for nine full-timers. Obviously, that line is higher than option C, and that's because, um, there will be less overtime with less full timers. So that's decreased in option C. Uh, the, again, option B versus option C in the EPL, which is the earned paid fees. That the per diems was given as their only benefit, um, that increases the, the four full-timers because obviously we're still live more happily on the per diems, which means they are still accruing EPL, which is something we have to pay out. Um, fire police remains the same as both. And then the department total, you'll see, and that just, uh, is a little bit different because some of the other numbers came in for the gas. But the overall difference is just over eleven thousand dollars. In the conclusion, you'll see that I basically just said, um, what are you ever going to get for full-time people for an eleven thousand dollar difference in this D versus C? So, like I had mentioned, that seesaw analogy right now, you know, these, the status quo, so option A, which is just the full-time, and then option B is, you know, each side of the seesaw. This one seems to be, uh, is like slightly towards, um, B, but it's almost exactly in the middle. So to me, the difference between D and C is such a minimal amount. We've already seen so many other ways in the budget thus far that it's going to have to be is a very minimal difference. I know overall the difference is so large, but between the eight and the four, there really isn't much financial difference because of all the balancing that needs to be done. And the different lines that you can see in the comparison sheet, I really think it just makes the most sense at this point to go with the eight because there truly isn't that much difference in cost with the D versus C. Do you guys have questions? I can't see anyone, so.
Oh, we lost the camera? Sorry.
No, it's okay. I haven't seen anybody.
Anybody have any questions, Ashley? You, Coach?
So the regular budget would be a thousand, I mean, one million seventy-one thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Is that a?
That's last year's.
Current. Yeah, I understand. Now it's going to be eleven twenty.
Eleven twenty.
I mean, one million twenty.
Right. Yeah, one million one hundred and twenty thousand is the status quo proposed budget. We stay exactly how we are.
Okay. So you're looking at an increase. In B, you're looking at an increase of a hundred and forty-six thousand?
That sounds correct, yes.
And then you're looking at C, with a hundred and fifty-four, fifty-five thousand?
So if you go from, if you go from A to B, you've got a hundred and forty-two thousand dollar increase. If you go from A to C, you'd have a hundred and thirty thousand, I'm rounding, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase. From, from each other. But, um, if you go last year's amount, last year's amount to option A, so what we have budgeted last year to this year, status quo is a forty-eight thousand dollar increase. Last year to option B is a hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase. Last year, option C is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar increase. That's probably more what you're looking for.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you think after what we went through this last year, tax increases and everything else, and what, I, I know you guys must have got just as many calls as I got. Do you think we should be doing that this year, increase our budget?
I'm not thinking we should. And I, and something's going to happen here. We've got to do something, but I'm not sure. Yeah. This is what we want to do this particular year.
Personally, I just think I get a lot of calls. I'm set on a set income too, so it's just going to be hard. It's going to be hard for the taxpayers down in the country.
Sure?
So I got these this afternoon, so I took quite a bit of time to go over them. My opinion, before this shift was brought to us, we should have, the selectmen should have been brought these different options and probably had workshops on such a change because this is a major change. And then one option should have been brought to us, not three different options. I don't think this is the year to put an option of a hundred and ninety thousand or a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase. We haven't had a lot of time to review this, and I think that what we need to do is, the board needs to look at these different plans and how we're going to make adjustments for this. I have to agree with Callie and Floyd, this is not the year to have a major increase after what we went through last year. But I'm not satisfied with where we are right now in this proposal. There was not a lot of discussion with this board and looking at the different options and having time to, to compare. It should have actually been reviewed with the board prior to just brought to the committee, um, at budget time. So I would, I'm going to stay with the, uh, the original. And I'm not going to vote for either of the, uh, full-time positions, increasing to five and/or nine, because I think there needs to be enough discussion on how this should go. Huh?
Any, you good, any thoughts on this?
Um, I just, I'm puzzled at how these numbers can be so close. Uh, when you're talking, ju- just a swing of health insurance for ha- for half of the full-time people, whether they take out insurance or whether they get full family health insurance, it's going to swing at forty or fifty thousand dollars. I know this was an estimate. You don't know what you're going to get. Uh, retirement, same thing. Uh, lots of unknown costs. Um, my concern certainly isn't, you know, eleven thousand dollar difference. My concern is year two after we go to the full-time fire department and year three, because those numbers are going to jump. And they're going to jump dramatically because that's what they've done everywhere. Um, Scott certainly would be more familiar with the full-time fire department and how that works. Um, so I'd like to hear from him. Um, you have to start somewhere. So whether we start, with, with the budgets the way they are, it's not that big a difference. You could, you could go with the current proposal of no full-time people and work towards as the year goes on, uh, if the board gets more information and, and say, all right, let's, let's try a couple full-time people. Your budget's not going to change that much, um, with these numbers. So I'd, I'd be more interested in doing something like that with more information and looking at it a little bit closer.
Scott?
I agree with, with Sharon that, um, I think it's a lot to sit here and, and come with, uh, A, number one, just a full-time staffing proposal without having sit and had a discussion about this, uh, at some point because, um, it's a major change. And I'm not saying that the town is headed in that direction because, but we are, staffing's been an issue for many, many years now. But, um, just looking at the budget, I, I think the overtime budget is far shorter than what it would actually be. Uh, and I think it's something that we should work on, have some meetings, come up with a plan for next year's budget. I just, I, I, again, I, I agree with Sharon that I, I would support the status quo for this year and then come back during, before next budget cycle, have some meetings and discuss and come up with a plan prior to our study of next year's budget.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm ready. The chief would like to respond.
Sure, go ahead. Ashley? She talked.
Uh, yeah, sorry, it's right on here. Um, I just have a couple, uh, points and, and questions I've thrown out that I just want to answer. So, um, selectmen, dealing hand, you had mentioned, mentioned the budget for insurance. We did budget every single person for both retirement and taking the insurance. Obviously, we did that at the most basic level, obviously, but we did count for everyone to be included in that. Um, the other thing is overtime, uh, budget less than a hundred. I appreciate the full-time, the entire full-time route versus a combination department that is full-timers with per diems. The, the reason why we truly believe, we think we can keep that overtime budget so low is because we have per diems to kick up those shifts. The overtime would be kind of, uh, the last-ditch effort to cover the shift. Because right now, the last-ditch effort is me, for example. Tomorrow night, I'll be covering the town because it wasn't picked up. Um, again, I understand, that's my job, you know, that is what I signed up for. However, past chiefs have not covered overnight shifts or left them empty. Since I've been the chief, every night shift has been covered, but that's been at the burden of these needs repeatedly. Um, the other thing is I find it hard. I mean, I've spent months and months behind the scenes putting this information together to give you guys every bit of information when this was presented last year before. Um, I'm not sure what else I can provide you for information, numbers, reasons why. Um, so if we're going to put this off for another year, would I know the history of the town? This has been brought up under multiple fire chiefs in the past. Maybe not to this extent as far as eight full-timers with the full kick to the full plan, but we can keep putting it off. In multiple meetings, I've heard safety issues with a town loader or another piece of equipment. I truly can say this is our public safety. This is for the town residents. We have been struggling with staffing, and that's not anyone's fault, other than, I guess, you play me because I'm the department head. But we have more people's departments that are hurting elsewhere that are their full-time jobs. They have to be committed to their full-time jobs. And when they get forced in, in Auburn, in Rutherford, in Poland, they have to go to work. So we end up holding the shortage. We fill this schedule almost every month. However, last-minute call-outs, last-minute forces, of that Oxford. Oxford gets the short end of a stick because we're no one's quote priority meeting. Their allegiance isn't to us a hundred percent because they have a full-time job where they get order in. I, I truly urge you guys who are against this to really think about it because at some point we have to start. And I know we say next year, but shouldn't we at least consider four, shouldn't we at least, I mean, four, I don't know, maybe eight, but shouldn't we consider something now? Because there's still time to workshop this in the meantime before July, when it happens. Like, like I said, we Like I said, we talk about safety all the time, you know. If you look at other capital, there's a lot of, a lot of things that aren't truly safety, and they get approved under the headline of safety, where this is fire and EMS 911 response. We want to be there for you, but I think at this point, we're at a turning point where this field is becoming more and more professional, and we need people at the station where their allegiance is to the town of Oxford and the town of Oxford residents a hundred and twenty percent. And if you get full-timers, that's a lot more than you're gonna get. Auburn is a much bigger municipality, it took Auburn a long time to get to the position where they are. And anyway, I would really, really urge you to consider voting for us and to workshop this now until we're able to post this.
I'm gonna make a motion to support the one million, one twenty-four, five eighty-one budget.
Oh, here, second. Second. Any more discussion on this? All those in favor?
Just wanna verify the number if I can, please, Sharon. The, just to make sure, you got the updated with the fuel changes and stuff. It'll be one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, two forty-four, that includes the fuel bit changes?
Yes.
Is it okay to amend it to the one?
Yes.
Any more discussion on this?
Yes, sir.
This will go to the townspeople for dual recommendations. Budget committee recommends, selectmen recommend.
Yes.
Okay, so we're both unanimous. Next on your list, sir.
Thank you, Chief. All right, so now we're gonna get into some capital items. The first one on the list is the transfer station. So for the transfer station, we've got a couple of items. Just bear with me, I'm getting to the right point in my book here. So for the transfer station, we have three things. The first is the bay heater for eighty-eight hundred dollars. Remember, I mentioned to you guys, it was supposed to be eighty-eight hundred dot eight thousand dollars even, so eighty-eight hundred dollars for the bay heater. The demo loading wall for twenty-four five. And then now I have added to the conversation from, based on the budget committee's, the loader for, we discussed up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the loader. So would you like Ed to touch on these, or would you like to?
Yes.
I do have it online. The bay heater and the loading wall.
Yeah, the loader's up here, because it's over ten thousand dollars.
Are we gonna take these individually, or are we gonna take these all together? What's the wishes of the board? I think we should do it individually, is it my opinion? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Let me just ask a question here.
Sure.
On the bay heater, has anybody, have they checked? I mean, we do have a gentleman that does grant writing. Has anybody looked into seeing if they can put some grant money?
Not for the bay heater specifically, no.
Do you think there's a possibility, because they can get the grant, especially going through, what is it?
Efficiency main.
Efficiency main, yeah.
I've seen them for heat pumps and stuff, I guess I haven't seen one for this style of heater before, but I can look. Certainly.
We'll have to try and figure out what is the savings somewhere.
Anybody else have any words to say on this? I guess I find it hard to put a heater in a building with no insulation, but I'm probably in the minority.
Maybe something with the grant money and the efficiency main, maybe they might go into a study in price of money so we can get that done.
I don't think that's an option tonight.
Oh, I think so.
Anybody else's opinion on this?
I'm not, I'm not a firm believer in the heaters, but I'm leaning more towards what we're gonna do with the loader.
While we're down, let's try to do the, you don't wanna have the light.
I just recently did some bits with, some projects with efficiency main. I didn't see any of this type of heater, but I did have the mini splits, the heat pumps. They do cover those, but that's not the same type of things. So I didn't see those in that list, is all I'm saying. I don't know if there is grant money available other than that. But I think this would make a difference in heating the very cold times for, if there were those that are there. They may do work, and individuals work there. It's radiant heat, and it's for specific space, and it is proven to work.
Is this supposed to heat the whole building?
No.
What areas is it for heat?
It just heats, um, Aaron actually explained it last week.
Over the bends, where you pull your bends back and dump it, that's what it's for. So you're there greeting the people and making sure they're putting in the right spot. You're not, you know, taking a break and going in the back room, and then all of a sudden, everything's screwed up in the wrong place.
And it's something that's only turned on during the real cold times, it can be turned on and off at any time.
He's supposed, heats like a spotlight, right?
Right, it's just that one cone. And they have them down at the recycle building, down at Snitzer on Washington Avenue. They have like five in that building, but that's all uninsulated building, they leave the doors open all day long. But it just takes off the chill to make sure people can work and not get, you know.
So what does it run on?
That runs on national gas down there, but obviously propane, and our propane's, if we get the gas one sixty-eight, I mean, probably six hundred more gallons a year, maybe, at the most.
Is that what they estimated?
What's that?
The six hundred gallons?
That's what we're estimating, we figured, well, we're gonna run it probably December, January, and maybe a little bit if I worry.
Anybody else have any questions on that? Do I hear a motion?
Well, I see the budget committee says not approved.
Correct.
I'm making a motion not to approve all of the budget committee.
Do I hear a second? Second. All those in favor of not getting heated? All those in favor?
No.
You're a no? And you were no, Colton?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of getting heated? Three, two. The next is the wall, yes?
The demo wall.
Yes.
As you can see, I sent you three different pictures, I went up and took them today. All they are is the old cement block type wall. If the tractor grabs it just wrong, then the next thing you know, I'm calling the highway department down to fix the wall. I'm just afraid that, you know, one of these days, they're gonna fall and something's gonna be there, but it's up to you guys.
How high is that wall?
It's three bricks, so it's like ten feet to twelve. I just think it's time that we invest and take care of it, and it'll be done and over with. It's up to you guys.
What's the wishes of the board?
Just a question, do people walk inside that?
Yes. Yeah, they're dumping the things, they're all standing there, you could be dumping a trailer, it could be thrown down on the ground.
And you never know if it's gonna fall or not.
No, it's, it's up there and it's safe, and then it could be, you know, the dirt pushing it back. As you can see, some of them are tipping now.
I'll make a motion to support the wall being fixed so that it does not fall and cause harm on anyone.
Have these ever fallen when you haven't been hitting them with a loader?
Yes, the dirt pushes on the back of the floor. It's just, it's like a, I don't know, it ain't a real hard dirt, but it's, it'll rain, all that stuff. You can see where, down in the middle of it, where the dirt's come through them. And the highway department down, takes them three, four hours to put it back up, and it's back again for who knows how long, but.
You can't pick them up with your loader?
There's no hook, so I think it's a little excavator, so I'm gonna.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, first second. All those, you have some questions?
Yeah, how many times has that been done in the last year? How many times has a block fallen over on its own?
Twice.
Two times, not that it was.
It's loose, and the next thing you know, it just falls.
So you go home at night, you come in the next morning, there's a block tipped over.
It could be landed, yes.
Could be, or has been.
They've had to fix it twice, I mean, I'm not sure how, if it's tipped over in the middle of the night, but I mean, it's tipped over and it's laying on the ground.
When you're talking about the wall, you're talking about a full cement wall?
Yes.
Or new blocks?
No, full cement wall, it'd be twelve inches thick with rebar in it, and two side wings on it and a wing on the back, so it can't move.
When the insurance company comes, when they do their inspections every year or two, do they ever make note of that?
They have not. I don't think we ever got to that point, it was raining the day you come the last time.
I don't think they noted it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the wall? All those opposed to the wall? In our vote?
One thing is to move the budget committee not approved. What was the reasoning why the budget committee didn't approve?
I didn't have these pictures for them the other night either, so that's my fault, but I don't think they understand what the wall is.
So, the number that's on here, since we wanna talk about it some more, you said you could actually have this wall done less than this number.
Yep, we have the highway department go down and dig out the footers. He said he'd take seventy, seven thousand, seventy-five hundred dollars for it all to do.
That's different than you know it.
We have not had a conversation about.
Difference whether you're gonna. That's all it is, a crosswalk.
You know, ask for seventeen thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars, so that might be something we wanna look at. But, um, it doesn't change my opinion right now.
Yeah, and so your question, the budget committee?
Yeah.
So the reason, if I understood correctly, after the discussion that was, that happened, they felt that the loader was more of a priority than the wall and the heater. Basically, the compromise was the loader and not the two items.
I would agree with that. It was on the budget committee, plus, but probably most of us here were on the budget committee. Part of the reason we went back to having separate meetings was so the budget committee would have their own independent vote. Budget committee does what they wanna do. This board should do what we wanna do, not just mimic the budget committee one way or the other.
I just felt I'd like to hear what they had to say about it, why.
So have you changed your vote one way or the other, or are you abstaining? Chair?
So another option is to go with this price and then have the conversation with the highway department to see if that's something they can do. And when you get to town meeting, this is the number that goes on the warrant. But when you get to town meeting, it's just like anything else. If you're able to adjust your price, especially down, then the motion can be amended to the lower amount, which would be less than seven thousand, if that's what it would be. Obviously, you can't do it if it's higher, but you can if it's lower, so that's just another option.
I'm gonna go with the wall.
You're going with the wall, okay. So those opposed, and those that oppose the wall? Three, two, you have the wall.
So next is the.
Loader.
Loader.
Any question, Mr. Town Manager? Fund balance policy, current.
Can you hurry that for us right now?
Right now, the fund balance policy, see if you can create the things we can approve at eight hundred and twenty-three, two thirty-five, point two five. Have a running balance if you were to take out.
Up to this point, what we've already approved in prior meetings, we're at eight twenty-three, two thirty-five.
Any discussion on the loader?
I make a motion we find the way around the fund balance policy.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So.
Go ahead.
I feel that we, if they want it and everything else, they should put it in the taxpayers'. We're gonna take money out of the fund balance, let's put it to a tax committee, not buy an equipment that doesn't go in front of the taxpayers'. That's all I think. I feel if we're gonna buy something that's big, put it in front of the taxpayers', let them make that decision.
I could, I could go along with your agreement on that. I, as everybody knows, I have a lot of hot burn about the loader anyways, and I just think that we could get by with what we got. Obviously, I'm not in the majority on that.
I don't know, if you see the new paper that come out, writings come up to give us an estimate on the trade-in. He said the main reseal is going, and I started out with Duane, that's another sixty-five hundred dollars we're gonna dump into it if we keep it.
For that, is that it?
Right, that's just that, that was in your part, so that's, for him to put it, take it apart, and say it's gonna be down a week, probably doing it, because you gotta take the homeowner up to do it. You see three bids there? The last bid that come in is really low, nobody knows anything about the tractor. It's a two thousand twenty-three, it's got twenty-five hours on it. We don't know nothing about it, it's what the Volvo is recommended, and it went in at like a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. There was one bid there before, and then they put a five-year warranty bumper-to-bumper on it, and it brought up to one eighteen.
Which one's the?
Good, one right there, yeah. Yeah, ESL, yeah.
Music quotes, yeah.
Right. The other one was already passed out to you, I think you said.
One's the cap, which one do you listen to?
The writing one, it's good writing.
It's in the book, I think.
Adam sent that today.
Yeah, I emailed that to everybody. Alright, so the, the Whiting one is, uh, that one is a total after the trade-in of a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred. That's the updated from what you have in your book from Whiting before.
Chair.
So, um, this afternoon when Adam emailed the updated stuff, he, uh, paid work. He emailed an estimated quote for the front seal that was just found on a highway loader that is at the transfer station. The estimate to fix that is sixty-five hundred dollars. As I understand it, there's another four thousand dollar job that has not been done yet, so we're looking at over ten thousand right now on two different items. And I don't think that front seal was on the estimated list of what repairs were going to be needed when we originally asked, um, whoever it was to tell us some of the repairs that were gonna be needed. So now we've got this front seal, we've got the other four thousand, um, dollar fix, that's over ten thousand. In addition to what we've already spent on maintenance since the highway loader has been brought to the transfer station. My original concern, and I'll say it again, is before you know it, we're gonna have spent in repair what it would cost to have bought a new one. When you have a piece of equipment that continues to require thousands of dollars in repair, at some point in time, you have to be financially responsible and say, how much more thousands of dollars are we gonna put to repair this when we should be replacing it? As I understand it, it's losing, um, oil on a weekly basis, twice so far this year. Um, the, um, they've had big problems with the air going out of the tire. They've had to buy, we were told that they had to buy, uh, some type of pump so that they can keep the tires pumped up. That's all time consuming that the staff has to do, that's all money too. When they're playing around trying to fix this and keep it running, they're not doing their work. So I think it's about time that this loader get replaced and we stop putting money into something that it's gonna continue to cost us thousands. And it, it has proven that that's what it's done since we've had it there. At this point, I would support, um, purchasing a loader and, um, I, I'll support it coming to our fund balance. Because I don't wanna pay another ten thousand dollars. If we wait, we're gonna have to have this, these two fixes done before town meeting. That's another ten thousand we're gonna put in it, so...
How much oil is used in that?
Oh, about a quart and a half a week. It's, it's burning it, and then it's leaking out underneath where that seal's dripping.
This guy made this assessment on this seal, was he just looking at it for a trade-in and he told you that?
I don't know, he offered us, what did he offer us? What did, what did Whiting offer us?
Whiting's got eighteen thousand.
So I mean, that's a pretty good trade-in for a piece of...
My concern about this, when we originally talked about this, you didn't want that loaded up, did they want?
I didn't, no.
Nope, and it's funny, it's gotten worse and worse.
Well, I signed my tire, I knew what was, what was gonna happen, that's why I done it.
I see.
I mean, I dumped fourteen or fifteen thousand in that Volvo before you decided to send it down the road.
I did, I think the board did that.
No, but I mean, you're the one that, you know, I'm just saying, that's, it's foolish. I mean, the amount of money we could save on other things and, I think we oughta think about it.
If we're gonna put this in there, I want the people to vote on it. I don't want them to, I don't, I don't want this just, if we take it out of fund balance, you know, it's a, I ain't arguing that that's the cheapest way to go, but I mean, if, if we're gonna spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars, like, people are gonna vote on it.
Then I don't support putting another ten thousand dollars in it between now and June on these two repairs because...
I don't think you got it.
Well, what are they gonna use, is the highway department?
How many times has that been broke down and you couldn't use it?
Not, we're, we're gonna drive it.
I mean, as far as the deal with your tire deal, I think I went by the town garage the other day and he was putting some old tire on one of the, on the new one, is that true?
And, well, I've not been trying to, um...
Oh, I knew they weren't putting the new one, huh?
One of John Deere is done now, you know, they do a pushing, they paint the inside of the wheels, and allow on that rubber tire, it's straight on the paint. So we had to have that painted around, because we did have a new old steel form, one that spun in the fly. So, maybe first the tire company does that, and they build John Deere, and John Deere's been paid for the bill for all this.
Oh, okay.
So, so that brings up another situation, twice this winter, the highway department, the brand-new loader had tire problems and they could not use it, so they had to come down and get the old loader. So we can't even depend on the brand-new loader because they have to then depend on the loader they don't...
That's what I'm saying, but he's making out like it's gonna be, won't be no expense on the new one, and it will be.
I'm talking about their loader right now.
Oh, okay, yeah?
Their loader, they couldn't use twice because of the tires, so they had to come down and get the old loader. Did you know that?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I mean, it's the town.
Uh, I'm not even gonna discuss it, but my brand-new loader in the board, he, it's, he's implying that the new loader shouldn't broke down.
I did not say that. What I said, Jim, my point was, a brand-new loader had to be put up and you had to go and get the old loader because yours wasn't working. I didn't imply what you said at all, so make sure you know what I'm saying before you tell this room that I'm implying something. My point was, that loader had to be used because yours was down. So what happens if we don't replace this one, then you don't have a backup.
Okay, we, we've discussed it, pretty enough.
I know, and I say, I say just put it to the taxpayers instead of taking, if you're gonna take the money out of the designated funds, just take a hundred and fifty thousand, put it towards tax committee, that's my view.
Okay.
But are, aren't you doing that if you use the money out of the fund balance policy to purchase the loader, rather than going to the taxpayers again and asking for another hundred and forty thousand?
Again, we hadn't even gone to them.
If you go to the town meeting and ask for the capital purchase, now we're gonna, if it's approved, if it's approved, we're gonna ask the taxpayers for an additional hundred and forty thousand dollars when we've got money sitting in the bank that we can purchase it with.
I agree with it, is there a motion on the floor?
You've got Scott, he was just trying to ask a question.
Go ahead.
I get both of your, your points, but if we're gonna do that, then why haven't we done that with last year's fire truck, last year's ambulance, um, highway trucks years past? We've always taken that and the greater, we've taken that out of the fund balance policy before, so why are we singling out this loader for that? Is my question.
Because we singled the loader out all year long and all last year for the same reason, and I'm sorry if that's the truth. That loader has been singled out every single year, why, I don't know, and I think it's about time it stopped.
Well, I think we've been talking about loaders here at least three years, four, one loader or the other or both, so, uh, who?
Okay, I have a motion, because anybody else get anything else from this discussion? And motion was to get the loader, correct?
How the fund balance policy, with the, um, the specific loader?
Whiting?
For clarification, may I?
Yeah.
If, for the motion, would it, would it be possible, maybe, do, do you wanna go with these numbers or do you wanna out of bid or take these quotes? I'm sorry, but just for the clarification.
I would say these quotes, how many times are we going to go to the same bit, same companies and ask for another bid? At some point, they're gonna just tell us, no, thank you, I've given you ten bids already in the past year.
Well, you know, I get, I get a little bit of a problem with that too, 'cause I believe that if any department here, if the highway department wants something, he needs something, I think that should be discussed with the town manager, and I think the town manager should be getting the bids. I don't believe the department head should be out getting bids from anybody and everybody. Sorry, but I don't like that.
So that's the policy here, and just so you know, that's the way it should be done, but it's not being done that way.
You're correct.
It's being delegated out to the department heads, and it should not...
I don't believe he delegated it.
Yes, he did, he told Ed to get the prices.
I am...
After this, but not the first time.
That's the way it's been, Adam has delegated the bids...
He does this time.
No.
Bids or quotes?
I've asked, I have asked, directed Ed to get quotes for this, on this loader discussion all the way through. Originally Ed brought forward the, was it two years ago, you brought forward prices?
No, no, dollars, fifty, dollars, fifty, dollars.
Yeah, and then when it came up again, I asked him to get updated prices so we could continue to have these discussions.
Okay, we've discussed it. All those in favor and of the motion?
I don't have a second.
Scott.
He made the motion.
Let's go to that one for...
Yes, we do.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
The same, same thirty, a bid on that.
You have more questions? Okay, so the motion on the floor right now is that we go with the new loader, all those in favor? All those opposed?
But this is coming out under the designated funds, right?
Fund balance policy.
Fund balance.
May I ask a clarifying question before we move on?
Sure.
So I believe that there are about seventeen thousand dollars left from the sale of the Volvo. Would the board be open to, as we, obviously this is, you know, as this moves forward, using the remaining seventeen thousand and then the remainder from the fund balance policy, or just wanna leave the whole seventeen in the transfer station reserve and just fund balance policy? Does it matter to the board?
Well, we put it to the new one.
Second.
Okay. Sorry to keep beating it, but... Okay, so next, next we have the highway department, they're requesting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new truck. Uh, would you like Jim to give the rundown on that?
Yeah, Jim.
Uh, looking to replace the two thousand sixteen one ton, uh, pretty bad shape, rusted wise. Body, polyester, open, open, same as in it. The floorboards had to be catched up this year, first they had, uh, lot front end were, exhaust vent holes then, um, they said we're gonna start against a frame issue, I'm not really sure about that, but, uh, F minus one, it's used a lot, hot, hot off ground, it's, uh, it's two thousand sixteen.
Sixteen, twenty-five, no.
And, uh, tonight, hey, beyond everything else, the frame and everything is all green and white. It's, it's, I, I, I believe it's service, but I'm, I'm not sure how much longer it's gonna be real pendable. So I'm looking at replacing it with a, just an example, F minus fifty or Ram fifty-five hundred eleven, make along, um, hundred and forty-four drive, but looking at the parts on this one, ten foot municipal flower, eight foot blade, stainless steel body, uh, new, uh, polyester sanding, and, there's a lot heavy duty truck.
This is all included in the price?
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, do you look at the books? Look, I was really surprised when the body was half the cost of the bid, I mean, it's outrageous, but, um, I set it up to three different places, just need a phone, and I, I believe in that, I don't like the information, but, uh, it's not where it's at, it's, um, Adam has picked it somewhere, the Volvo, Austin, Fort Hills, and that stuff I really need to see, and, uh, it, it just, I, totally have to be more than that, more than that, it's not a good one.
What's the issues of the wall?
What roads do, does this truck pass?
Everything off the street up to Loudly Lake, uh, the fire department, it's closed, the fire office, it's closed, uh...
It's the smaller roads?
Yes, Little Dale, uh, Pop Street, Middleway, Bywellway, anything where we really have the big engine, anything trucking group takes, you know? And the reason I'm willing to test what municipal power is doing, is really a great show to call, and I only know from how I've been myself. We could spend throughout following the fire station, it'd be for money, it's just, I, I, I think it makes sense and it will help.
We got a new bucket loader?
Uh, we, um, what's that?
We got a new bucket loader, we could use that.
And then the truck comes back, we'll say...
No, I'm saying from the transfer station, we can use that.
Oh, sorry, man, please, but, um, yeah, so that's where I'm at with that, what have you got to decide?
Any, any discussion here? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to support this truck.
Okay, and how would you like to pay for our man?
That was recommended by Adam to be on the warrant.
Yes, that is where we start, yeah, town meeting warrant, yeah. Second.
Any more discussion on this?
These haven't gone together, we've got some quotes, but, and we need to go to bed.
It means you want to go to bed.
Um, and this is a separate capital item on the warrant of itself?
Yes, sir.
You're good, and you're okay with it, you know, putting it, okay? All those in favor? Yeah?
Okay, so the next two, the next two, uh, capital items are, I'll lump them together 'cause they're under like general government administration. Five thousand dollars for the cemetery repair reserve, ten thousand dollars for the Thompson Lake Dam repair reserve. As far as the Thompson Lake Dam is concerned, um, I think the main focus right now has been looking at that retain, you know, that large retaining wall that goes along there? That's in pretty rough shape, and, um, had the engineer looking at helping us with, uh, you know, putting together a plan on how to address that. So that's, that's what I'm saying, you know, planning on saving for.
How much do we have in the dam?
You have that handy, we just printed that off before we came in, Beth and I here. So right now, there's a hundred and nineteen thousand in the Thompson Lake Dam reserve.
What was the total cost of that wall?
I don't have an estimate on the wall yet, we, we've been working on it, he did a survey and now he's working on doing a cost estimate for us.
And don't you have the towns put some money in on that?
They do.
And they've been doing it very long.
Poland and, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Has Otis Field been putting, has it?
I know Poland has, I don't know if, I don't know if we received it from Otis Field this year or not. I'll follow up and...
Okay.
Yep.
I knew there was a time you had it.
Yeah, there was, but...
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that, uh, maybe with the five and ten thousand dollars on the dam and the maintenance of the cemeteries.
Do you hear a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, and then, um, we have two remaining municipal, there's municipal and debt service under, uh, general government, so if we wanna go to the municipal tab and we can, and we can take care of that. Okay, so under the municipal tab, we've already settled the third-party request for five thousand, so I'll go through the other items. Insurance, that's our liability insurance, that is, we've reached out to MMA, we have not received our bill yet as we're just going through the renewal process coming up. They are giving us an estimate of a seven percent increase, which would make our liability insurance one hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. That is a seventy-three hundred dollar increase. The library, we have also already settled that. Third parties, the shelter fee is sixty-nine thirty-two, that's based on per capita, that remains the same. Electricity, this is for like street lights, uh... Electricity, this is for like street lights, uh, pottle traffic lights, uh, there. And then casino traffic light, meeting house electricity. So that is thirty-six twenty-four. That is a twelve hundred dollar increase. And the reason for that increase is that, um, the meeting house, we added, we added the meeting house. In the past, we haven't been budgeting for the meeting house costs. So that's going to add it to the, all the way. Maintenance, street light maintenance and repairs remains the same as two thousand. The water for the quarterly hydrants remains the same, thirty-one, sixty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. Unemployment, three thousand, five hundred. That's a thirteen hundred dollar increase. And I'm sure the board is aware, but we are self insured. So when there's a claim, we send that through the Department of Labor to the state. And we've had some more claims, so we've had to fund that a little bit more. So those are your municipal items. So the total of everything, this total includes the library and includes the third party request. But the total of everything in the municipal facilities budget is two hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. And then the next is the debt service. So we have the new town office, ninety-two thousand, five hundred and five. Remains the same, those payments remain the same throughout the entire long. The TD road bond, four hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars. This is the last payment this year. That's a fifty-four hundred dollar decrease. The projected ambulance lease purchase is eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven. Mini pumper is sixty-seven thousand, three twenty-one. The front end loader for the highway department, seventy-six thousand, one hundred and eighteen. And that is just a, the last payment for that is November twenty-twenty-seven. Just as a side note. Uh, based on the decision on the loader, removing the fifty thousand dollar placeholder for the front end loader for transfer station. You'll notice that, uh, for long-term debt, we have the sewer, the sewer, excuse me, and the water line. The sewer entire payment is eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine fifty. The water line is one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven for a total of nine hundred and forty-two thousand. With the TIFs, the way, the Route twenty-six tip and the Walmart tip this year with the projected revenues from that, I do not feel that we need to set any additional money aside for the sewer bond payment. So that's been zeroed out, which is a forty-five thousand dollar reduction. And then the water line, I feel that all we need to be setting aside this year is twenty-one thousand dollars. So that's is a lot. So the tip will be picking up the burden this year quite a bit on those. And that's because the town valuation has gone up and we have a lot more tip revenues coming in. So with all of that being said, your total debt service for this year is seven hundred and forty-three, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine thirty-six. Seven, five, three, nine, three, six.
How much each other?
Do you make a motion?
Sure. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just a question, how many more years on that one?
You gotta wait, you gotta hold on, Paulie, please. I think it's only a couple of years.
I was going to say, it shouldn't be very long.
Yeah. So it looks like our last payment is, is, uh, November of twenty-twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Yep. So that, that one's settled, right?
Yes.
All right, and then the revenues. Do you guys have that or do I need to send that around? I believe you guys, I believe you guys have the revenues, do you not?
There.
Maybe, all right, maybe you don't. Be the end of the floor. I'm hoping I did not, uh.
Well, you have to get stuff with the, um, county and school.
Okay. Copies and everything. I apologize. Let me, uh, thank you. Let me, uh, run those off, they've just been updated. I apologize, we got stuck on the capital and I didn't, um, finish getting that prepared for you. So while she's getting the revenues, I believe that that outside of the revenues, that covers everything. And I've been starting to move forward with the road bond as we discussed. And so that'll be, that should be good to go for the town meeting warrant.
So we'll go through it?
Yeah, once we get back with the revenues that I didn't make office forty-four, um, we'll be able to get through those.
One second, I'm running down time.
Sure.
Just curious what's going on with Rabbit Valley, is that still in the engineer's hands? And is the state funding still secure?
Yep, so, um, yeah, he just, they finished the survey. He's working on the bid packages right now. Uh, the engineer is gonna be ready to move forward with the bids, and he says in April. So the hope is we can get that out and get that done. But that's from the casino to the bottom of the hill. And then the board is talking about, uh, this, uh, road bond that would then take it from the bottom of the hill all the way up to, uh, what's the other end of the street? Thank you. So, yep.
Be a drag strip up there.
Yeah.
Rabbit Valley, um, I thought the engineer, a couple of weeks ago voted up and, and if you want to keep it, it's a test hold, so.
Thank you.
You have to make sure it's all led, you're unconfused.
All right. Yeah, we haven't forgotten about Rabbit Valley, though.
No, I know. I saw it, I saw it.
Yeah, we, we, uh, yeah, we checked on it. In fact, pretty immediate, actually. All right, you guys, you good? So for excise tax, I am estimating a eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two seventy-three. Now, a lot of times with revenues, I generally stick with more of a three-year average on what, on the revenues. But excise tax, I, what?
Can I stop you?
I'm sorry, yep.
The year-to-date point four, point five covers up to what date?
The year, oh, on where we're at?
The numbers that are year-to-date are one July, two March first.
I updated these like a month ago. So, beginning of March, March, yep. Sorry, I didn't understand that. All right, so, uh, yes, so eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two seventy-three. That is for excise tax. Usually I go with a three-year average on a lot of these revenues. But here in Oxford, the trend that it seems with the excise tax is every third year, there seems to be this huge spike. Um, like during COVID, we actually exceeded a million dollars in excise tax. And then we dropped down pretty significantly. So for this particular year, you're seeing an average of the two lower years. I think estimating that we're going to crest the nine hundred thousand dollar mark again. It feels a little bit rich to me. So I'm being a little bit conservative on that, on the estimate. So eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Uh, boat excise tax, eighty-three oh-two. That is a three-year average. Interest on taxes, twenty-seven thousand, five eighty-seven. Mass gathering, four hundred and eighty-three. That's a three-year average, but that's swayed by the nine hundred. Probably just go with the five hundred thousand even on that. The tree growth, thirteen thousand, one sixty. The local road assistance money, sixty-seven thousand, thirty-two. Veterans reimbursement, twenty-six eighty-three. Agency fee, or agent fees, excuse me, twenty-seven thousand. Marriage licenses, one thousand, one hundred and sixteen. Marriage certificates, eight hundred and sixty-six. Birth certificates, six, sixty, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. You'll notice a contrast, death certificates, one thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine. Burial permits, four hundred and six. Building permits, fifty-five thousand, eight thirty-six. So this is another one that if you look back and if you try and do a three-year average, it really skews it. Because we had, again, uh, back in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then also in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had some significant commercial builds. We had a Walmart expansion, we had a Hannaford expansion remodel, we had solar fields. We had a whole laundry list of the large commercials. So I talked to code enforcement officer and we, you know, really looked at this. Feeling like based on what we're seeing for building permits coming through and so forth, fifty-five thousand, eight thirty-six, um, which is an average of the smaller years, felt more, more in line with what we're going to see. Because we're not going to have another Walmart remodel. We're not going to have another, you know, that stuff happen, so. Plumbing permits, nine hundred, all right, excuse me, nine thousand, one hundred and seventeen. Recycling revenue, thirty-seven thousand, three eighty-four. Cemetery income, three eighty-three. Transfer station, sixty-three thousand, five thirty-eight. Casino license, twenty-five thousand. As the board knows, twenty-five thousand is the, is the fee and that's consistent. Casino revenue, I love that, at the, the two, two million dollars. Um, that's been definitely consistent that we have hit the two million dollar mark. You can see that some years that we've hit two-point-two million, some years we've hit two-point-one. Uh, we are at one-point-four as of the drafting of this document. Ambulance billing revenue, three hundred and thirty thousand. Marijuana business fees, thirteen thousand, eight thirty-three. Those seem to, um, those seem to be staying somewhat consistent, but I think the market's kind of taking care of some of those businesses along the way, if you will. Waste water treatment facility revenue, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand. North End Sewer, fifty-eight thousand. Timber harvest, three oh-two. I just left that in there because the, we are getting a little bit of revenue because the vocational program has been up there doing some harvesting and we're seeing a little bit of revenue from that, you know, on the town force. Um, and then revenue sharing, five hundred and eight thousand. That is the number projected on the state website as of when I wrote this the other day. So.
So good luck.
Thank you. Well, and that's actually where I, what I was going to say is that that number does change. So, um, as usual, before we go to commitment, check that day to make, you know, what that number is. And sometimes it's less and sometimes it's more. And sometimes we get more, so.
Question on timber harvesting. Does anybody, when's the last time anybody went in on the town phone? Other than the vocational, but go in and look at, surveying it, see what there's not there.
That's it. That's, since I've been here, that's all that's happened up there.
Do we have a timber harvest planned for that?
Yeah, I think Billy.
Billy Duncan, no, I don't, you know.
It is a forest plan.
Right, but I mean, he's, he's got to redo it every ten years. I don't know if it's done, since he.
I'll follow up and find out.
Funny, I was just talking to you.
Yeah, really. Yeah, I don't think it's a difficult ten, yeah. Usually after he does it, then he makes a recommendation.
So that is your, uh, total revenues of, you know, four million, three hundred, one thousand, eight dollars. That brings us to, I believe, that we, once we, I think that covers everything. So.
Hold tight and move.
You got it?
All right, I think we got it. I feel like I've got my marching orders and.
Move around total on the bottom line. What changes or not?
If you guys want to bear with me for a second, I'll sit here and, and do it, so.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah, I mean. Uh, Beth, Beth looked up, uh, the dam funds if you guys want. I believe she's got an answer, she looked a trio.
What's going up? No, you're going to have to fire it. I'm going to change that, okay?
All right. Have a good night, guys.
Paulie, did you hear that? You asked the question whether the three towns have paid? And all three towns have paid towards the dam.
They have.
In the last two years, I look back to this year, the board.
You're saying Otis Field and Paul, correct?
Yeah, Otis Field, Paul and Cassie.
And?
I'm almost there. All right, so that should be. Now, this is based on what the board has voted on tonight. So this is what the fire department has status quo. So six million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. That's a three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar increase. Then capital is three hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred, which is, last year we did over a million dollars in capital. So that's a six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar decrease in capital requests for this year. I will, but I will, um, I'll print these out, you know, I'll pipe you these up based on everything and I'll send that to you so everybody can have it.
You're sounding good.
Yep, okay. Well, thank you very much for listening to me go on and on about all this thing, so thank you.
Just use the bill.
Yeah, do I hear a second?
More should return.
Second? All clear?